Motion is second. Any discussion? There being none, all of the party by?
Aye.
All of the post saying? Okay, we'll get into our department reports. Paul, do you got anything you want to bring up tonight?
I think you're gonna bring up...
Dog.
Yeah, dog's a sure resolution.
Resolution?
Yeah. My policies and stuff?
Yes.
So, you know, someone has it so bad.
Do you have that? I didn't bring this resolution chart.
No, but he was gonna bring it up and probably wanted the paperwork.
You might as well speak on that.
Okay. Sorry, guys. As you all know, we're going through accreditation process with the police department. Part of the accreditation process, we have to go over our entire manuals and upgrade them. Part of that is resolution that was assigned to that, accepted in our policies. The last one we did was in 2005. So, my question is to the council, how would you like to have those policies reviewed? Would you like them in paper or sent to you electronically?
No. There it's...
Right now, the book is about that thing.
It's not preferred Google Docs. It is a real thick book.
So... We'll get that out to you shortly. Hopefully, our guidelines, you've got to be able to time to review it and vote on it, hopefully by June.
By June.
But it is probably 270 pages.
I'm gonna count them, but there's a lot, yeah.
There is a lot, yeah. The old book, and he's added to that, but we need that data, please.
Could we can dance it?
We have quite a bit, but because of accreditation, we're required to put in new policies in writing for best practices, so...
Okay. Mr. Wilson, this time? Mr. Cole? Luke is not here tonight, so we'll wait. You wanna wait on that, or you wanna wait down to your committee?
Down to committee.
Okay. Mr. Wilson has something he wants to address on the city going to Google this morning.
Mayor asked me to maybe speak about it a little bit tonight. We're looking at, we use Google Docs now, as most of you already know, but what we're doing is gonna probably transform our mail system so that you'll still keep the City of Harrison domain, but we'll be able essentially manage that now. And not only does that mean for email, but we'll also be able to have the Google Drive and all that stuff where we can save that stuff and share with city employees and stuff like that. Right now, we use it, but we're actually, as you know, you're probably having to use your City of Harrison and link it to Google. And what we're wanting to do is import all that in so that we can, we've got a breakdown between departments, and departments have seen the numbers, and everything's okay. Right now, we can't manage that ourselves. We have to call a company on Mountain Home to reset a user's password and that will give us a little bit more control over here, so just wanna let you all know about that. But if you have any questions, go ahead and try to answer them.
The cost back home is, I'm not gonna say it's mine new, but I think all of our departments can absorb it. Other than the administrative department, I started looking there. I said, "We got four users, that's not gonna cost administration much." And then David told every council member in there, too. I said, "Oh, that kinda tripled the cost on administration, but we can handle it." So, at least we're all gonna be on the same domain and everything else. You know, everybody's not doing their own thing, so we're getting there. David done an outstanding job.
Thank you.
Even though I get you for sabotaging every once in a while, you know, to keep your job, but you're doing a great job.
Exactly. It's just to keep the job secure.
Yeah. Okay. Well, move on down to committee reports. Mr. Williams?
Not tonight.
All right. Mr. Magnus?
The only thing we have, Mr. Mayor, is the council should have received their notification from Luke that the financials have been uploaded to Google Docs. Initially looking at them, the only thing that really stands out is that the, first of all, our summary needs to be redone. I think there's a variance there, but right now, we have a $6,000 surplus in the general fund. That's a $58,000 improvement compared to last year's budget. Again, don't wanna get, start counting our chicken yet, but that's a good sign for the city. Sales tax receipts were fairly flat, Luke said, but again, you just got to send out so many questions, just get in touch with Luke. And that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Magnus. Mr. Cole?
Nothing.
Mr. Craig?
Not tonight.
Y'all waiting for this long list down here? Mr. Oldball?
I'll be handled later.
Mr. Ed?
Wasn't on the long list.
You're waiting on the long list?
Okay. But I wanted to leave then, I've got my...
Only with you.
All right, we'll get down into ordinances and resolutions then. I did mess up on that, this, on the zoning ordinance and land regulation ordinance, this will be our second reading instead of our third. I thought it was the third, but I was wrong about that, so... We'll start out with our zoning code ordinance.
Make a motion to place the zoning code ordinance on its second reading by title only. Second, head.
Motion places it on the second reading by title only, and a second. Any discussion? There being none, I'll have the first caller roll. Joel Williams?
Yes.
Dana Taylor?
Yes.
Chris Ed?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
John Ove?
Yes.
Ryan Oswalt?
Yes.
Keith Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
An ordinance replacing and updating code title 14, zoning code.
Thank you. Then we'll move into the land development regulations ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to replace the land development regulations ordinance on its second reading by title only.
Second, head. I have a motion of second, places it on the second reading. Any discussion? There being none, I'll have the first caller roll, please. Dana Taylor?
Yes.
Chris Ed?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
John Ove?
Yes.
Ryan Oswalt?
Yes.
Keith Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
An ordinance replacing and updating part of code title 15 to adopt new land development regulation.
Okay. We'll get into the dog ordinance, but I will say something about this before actually putting it on the table. I have had, well, since our last meeting, I've had three people come to me in favor of it, and I've had one email and one phone call today warning us to somewhat get more precise on the definitions. I don't know if you've all have had that call or not. What they're saying is a definition of loud and frequent or within hearing distance, how do you somewhat regulate that? I've looked at other ordinances, there is some that have like, say they continuously bark for 15 minutes. I told a lady today, I said, "You know, a dog can bark for 15 minutes, or a dog can bark for five minutes, wait for 10 minutes, then start all over." I don't know. I can't tell you that, so... But those have been somewhat against it. I will say that one of them has had an issue, had a complaint on them, so, but, you know, hopefully, they were, people will take care of their animals, they have a responsibility for their animals. But I did tell them I would throw that to the table, and you all may have gotten some of those emails also.
One?
And they worried that we're pushing this too fast, and the people, people don't realize, a lot of people don't, that this is the same ordinance we had before, other than the fines and the dog tax requirement. But it is about the same ordinance, but I told the people I would bring that to the table, and I did, so... Okay. That being said, I'll entertain a motion to place this dog ordinance on its second reading. I'll entertain a motion to place the dog ordinance on its second reading. I will entertain a motion to place the dog ordinance on its second reading. Motion dies. For that, a motion. Okay, we will revisit all the dog orders. Okay, we're moving on down to rezoning, old dark metals set to be, and that's block two, three, five, and six. I'll make that motion. How, would you clarify that motion? You wanna read the whole thing? You make a motion by title only.
By title only.
I have a motion, place it on, is this first order?
This is the three? This is first reading, and except to the council, if you want to do more tonight. I don't know if there's a hurry or not.
Okay, I have a motion, place it on first reading by title only.
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion of it?
Mr. Mayor, I've received a few calls in regards to this, and I would like to make sure that we all clarify what occurred with Mr. Baughman when he was here, the discussion he had, and some of the comments, I've been asked to clarify this, basically, respect those comments for clarity. And Wade, you're gonna have to correct me here, there's the original lot owners, and then I think it was six additional, or seven additional lot owners, that could sign to have the covenants changed, for a total, I think, of 26, or 27, was it?
I would say 27.
Okay. I thought it was 26, there was 19, and then seven, for a total lot owner, so 26. They did that, they went up and got signatures, and 19 of those total 26 signed, have the covenants changed, it was recorded at the clerk's office.
Correct.
The other 17 individuals that live in that area, in that subdivision, were not original lot owners, so they weren't asked to sign those, and were not subject to those covenants, right?
It's not a matter of original lot owners, it's a matter of what lots were in that phase of the subdivision.
Okay.
For which the covenant applied.
But only 26, they needed the signatures of 26 individuals, and 19 decided to sign.
Can I help out?
Yes, sir. That's what I wish you would do.
Okay. This matter has been reviewed by the planning commission for, well, probably over a year now, and the planning commission did not choose to vote on the matter under the circumstances of there being covenants in that subdivision. As long as the covenants prohibited the changing of the zoning or any use other than residential, planning commission wouldn't touch it. So, the owners of these four lots got a petition up and read their covenants, got enough signatures according to their interpretation of the covenants, to make an amendment so that these four lots could be accepted from the restriction of the covenants. Came back to the planning commission, planning commission reviewed it, Mr. Baughman was here, stated his objections. The commission found that, or based on the filing of the amendment to the covenants, the commission and the city does not desire to get into the legal issues as to whether the count was done correctly, of getting the signatures, or whether the right people signed or didn't sign, but the planning commission let it late for at least a month after it had been presented to make sure the, Mr. Baughman and the property owners that are with him, so they would have a chance to get legal counsel or to do something to challenge those covenants. After the 30-day period, there was no challenge, planning commission felt like the petitioners had met their responsibility, and it is not the planning commission's job to interpret covenants, it is not this council's job to interpret covenants, but their remedy was to challenge the covenants, and we are not aware of any challenge to the covenants other than to come to the council or to city hall and state the fact that they don't like it. So, that's, that's kinda a background and legal position that I would tell you on behalf of the city, is that we don't wanna get into the courtroom or into the legal issues of the covenants. We took face value since they have been recorded since last December, I believe. So, that's, that's a response that I would give to Mr. Baughman.
Right, and you stated it much, much better than I would have, and the point I was making was there at committee, was that we were hearing from three individuals that were against it and one that was recanting their signature, but we didn't hear from any of the other 26 individuals at that point, and we didn't hear from any of the other 17 that they referred to of the 43. So, it seemed to me that there was a small minority here saying, "We wanna challenge this," but we didn't hear from the rest of those property owners in that area. And that's...
Their remedy is in public court.
That's right. And, but, again, to come to council, you know, if I'm the only person in my neighborhood against the dog ordinance, and everybody's for it, and I show up, you shouldn't just listen to me, those other individuals should show up as well, and that's the only point I was making. But I haven't heard from anybody that lives in that area that has said to me, "We don't wanna see it zoned commercial." All I know is the four people that showed up here that night.
Is anybody in the audience that would like to address this issue? There being none, nobody? Any other discussion then? Have a motion already on the table?
This will, if we want to dispose of it tonight, this would require suspension of the rules if you wanna deal with all three readings, or if you want to do, I don't know that there's necessarily a hurry.
We need that you hurry.
You gotta do it first, go first.
Okay, I'll ask the caller roll, please. Chris Ed?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
No.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
John Ove?
Yes.
Ryan Oswalt?
Yes.
Keith Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Dana Taylor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
An ordinance amending section 14.16, the zoning map of the Harrison Municipal Code to rezone certain lands from zone R2 residential to C3 highway commercial.
Okay, if the council wishes, I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules and place it on the second, third reading by title only, if the council wishes. Okay, we will not go to second. All right, we'll move on. Get that sheet over there, pull it away. Okay, we're gonna get down into our second issue, and Jeff brought to my attention that we may change, I don't know.
It's correct, I'm ready.
Okay.
You still got an old one, but I've dolled it out.
You dolled it out, the new one. Let's see y'all keep it going. But we'll look at the ordinance extending the levy of the .25 sales tax first. You have them in that order?
Yes, I do. I think that's the way they are. I'm ready.
You're ready? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to place this on its first reading by title only.
Second.
I have a motion, and a second. Any discussion on this?
It's not a new tax, it's...
It's not a new tax. It's standing right here, it's the current one we already have. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can, just for clarification, can you state where those funds go to, where the city?
Okay, this is, this one is for the quarter cent tax right now, that currently goes to the general fund. Of that quarter cent, about 64.3 of it goes to our public safety department, and then the rest goes into administration, accounting, streets, building grounds, leaving some out, about eight other departments within our city. And some of the, some of these funds on this quarter cent sales tax, that's all the money they get, never know. This is the only direct tax that comes straight to the city, it comes straight to the city. This is the only direct tax we have, other than the infrastructure tax. Now, granted, we get a percent of the county tax, we get a percent of that, but this tax comes straight, and it's the only one that funds our general fund departments. And by ordinance, about 64, I'm not exactly sure exactly, around 64% of it goes to our public safety. It's tied, it's tied with the asset we're already getting with, in public safety, and they get 64% of the general fund tax, too. So, a lot of people, a lot of people don't realize that.
I wanted it stated publicly, so the public and the newspapers can add up, we notify the public of where that money goes.
But this, like I said, I wanna, this is not a new tax, it's not a new tax. We just wanna renew the current one we have, so we can keep operating, keep our city going. Okay. Any other discussion? I will have the first caller roll, please. Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
John Ove?
Yes.
Ryan Oswalt?
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry. Keith Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Dana Taylor?
Yes.
Chris Ed?
Yes.
Motion carries.
An ordinance for the extension of the levy of a one-quarter of 1% sales and use tax within the City of Harrison, Arkansas, which sales and use tax shall be extended to be levied and collected until December 31, 2026, and prescribing other matters pertaining thereto.
Okay, this one here, there's a timeframe involved in this, both, actually, all four of these, there's a timeframe involved in it. We plan, as a city, to put it out to public vote on October 14.
August 14th.
Oh, excuse me, August 14. And, yeah, I'm scared of that, but anyway, with, there's a lot of paperwork, we have to send things to the state, get things approved through election commission, I'm not sure who all has to approve everything, but...
The State Department of Revenue has to approve the form of our ballot and the way we present this to the public.
So, and then we have to do a proclamation, I believe.
After the election.
After the election, and that takes about 30 days, so what we don't wanna happen is to put this on the general, the general election. What will happen then, we will not be able to collect any revenue till probably March next year. We will lose two or three months of revenue. Okay, that being said, at this time, I'd entertain a motion to suspend the rules and place it on a second, third reading.
So moved.
Okay, motion is second, to do that. Any discussion? There being none, I'll have the first caller roll, please. Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
John Ove?
Yes.
Ryan Oswalt?
Yes.
Keith Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Dana Taylor?
Yes.
Chris Ed?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Motion carries. Motion carries, although, oh, excuse me, sorry.
An ordinance for the extension of the levy of a one-quarter of 1% sales and use tax within the City of Harrison, Arkansas, which sales and use tax shall be extended to be levied and collected until December 31, 2026, and prescribing other matters pertaining thereto.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for adoption.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? This will, all of the party by?
Aye.
All of the post saying? Okay, that motion carries. We will have the emergency clause on this?
No.
We got time? All right, we'll move on to the second one here.
Make a motion to approve the ordinance extending the levy, the half-cent sales tax by title only.
On its first reading?
On its first reading.
I have a motion second. Any discussion?
Again, could you explain?
Okay, this, this one is our passive infrastructure tax. Everybody knows, the last, what, way, 16 years, we've had this tax. You don't see where this tax goes, 'cause a lot of it goes in the ground, but moving forward in our new infrastructure, which we'll, we've actually rolled out to council, but we will be rolling out to the public here very, very shortly, a lot of, a lot of that money is, is gonna go to government drive, and this will generate, what, 19 million? We've pushed out about five and a half million dollars in our infrastructure to go to revamping government drive for the safety of our kids, and another probably four million on some of our master street land, that will, we're gonna talk about the bypass later on, but they want us to do alternate routing, and we're gonna start working on alternate routing through our town. Wade, you slap me here if I'm getting down the line. Okay. And a lot of that extra, I'm gonna say about eight to nine million, will go into our water and sewer and different venues that we need to keep our rates down, and Wade, how many miles we figure water lines we got in the city? What was that, 280 or something like that, miles of water lines in our city?
180, 100, no, it's 200, 180, and yeah, it's a little over 200 miles.
Yeah, but anyway, we got, we got work, like you say, you won't see it, it's there, so that tax is a very good working tax, and that's what this passive sales tax is all about.
And I will say again, as important as the quarter cent sales tax is, I can promise you, without this tax, you won't wanna live here, it's unfortunate. This is desperate for the city in ways you...
And it's a continuation of what we're already saying.
Another continuation.
Good point.
But we will, we will be going out, actually, I was gonna talk about a little bit... But we will, we will be going out, uh, actually, I was gonna talk about a little bit later. Well, I guess we can talk about that, we're gonna be here a while, anyway, so, uh, but we're, we've already scheduled most of the clubs in town, we've, uh, started working on our, our different, uh, areas in town to have town hall meetings. We're gonna have several town hall meetings in different boards, and, uh, we're starting up that schedule also. Uh, it was brought to my attention that we probably need to get a committee formed, that the city cannot spend money for advertising, that is against the law. So, uh, it's brought to my attention that, uh, they'd like to have a committee, I actually had somebody come in today, and I'm gonna push it out to one of our council members or anybody else who wants to serve on that committee, to be the chair of that committee, since you brought it to me, uh, I will push it out to them, I will not announce that tonight, but, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna do a lot of work on this, make sure the public's, you know, we want to be as transparent as possible on where every penny of your money goes. That's what we, we want the public to be educated on where their tax money goes. And however else we can do that, I'm open for suggestions, so. All right, that being said, where were we? Are we calling a roll?
Ready?
Let's call a roll.
John Ove?
Yes.
Ryan Oswald?
Yes.
Keith Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joe Williams?
Yes.
Dana Taylor?
Yes.
Chris Head?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
An ordinance for the extension of the levy of a one-half of one percent sales and use tax within the city of Harrison, Arkansas, for the specific purpose of acquiring, constructing, indoor equipping, municipal water, sewer, street, drainage, composting, and public safety improvements, and prescribing other matters pertaining thereto.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to extend the rule and place it on a second, third reading.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion, second, any discussion on this? There being none, you ready to call a roll again?
Ready. Ryan Oswald?
Yes.
Keith Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joe Williams?
Yes.
Dana Taylor?
Yes.
Chris Head?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
John Ove?
Yes.
Motion carries.
An ordinance for the extension of the levy of a one-half of one percent sales and use tax within the city of Harrison, Arkansas, for the specific purpose of acquiring, constructing, indoor equipping, municipal water, sewer, street, drainage, composting, and public safety improvements, and prescribing other matters pertaining thereto.
Now, I'll entertain a motion for adoption.
Second.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor by aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same.
Special elections.
Special elections.
These are one-read ordinance?
Okay.
Is that by Tom Wombley?
That, if you want to make it that, this is single-read ordinance, so it's placed to, uh, this place on a first and only reading by title.
Make a motion to replace the ordinance, a special election, making the quarter cent sales tax on its first and only reading by title only.
Second.
I have a motion, second. Hey, if I got any questions or about this, there's a duty to carry on or something we have to add. Okay, I'll have the third call a roll, please.
Keith Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joe Williams?
Yes.
Dana Taylor?
Yes.
Chris Head?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
John Ove?
Yes.
Ryan Oswald?
Yes.
Motion carries.
An ordinance calling a special election in the city of Harrison, Arkansas, on the question of extending the levy of a one-quarter of one percent sales tax and use tax within the city of Harrison, Arkansas, which sales and use tax shall be levied and collected until December one, uh, two oh twenty-six, prescribing other matters pertaining thereto. I'm reading along on. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm prescribing other matters pertaining thereto.
Okay, we had to make a motion for adoption of the, did we not?
Yes, you did.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion for adoption.
Make a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Second.
Any discussion? There being none, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same?
Mr. Mayor would like to make a motion to approve an ordinance for a special election extending the half-cent sales tax on its first reading, by first and only reading, uh, by title only.
Second.
Uh, motion is second, any discussion on this? Boy, y'all, y'all get good. That didn't take, uh, okay.
We know how important this gets.
Yeah, yes. Uh, okay, any discussion? There being none, I have the first call a roll, please.
Joe Williams?
Yes.
Dana Taylor?
Yes.
Chris Head?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
John Ove?
Yes.
Ryan Oswald?
Yes.
Keith Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor would like to make a motion to approve your...
An ordinance calling a special election in the city of Harrison, Arkansas, on the question of extending the levy of a one-half of one percent sales tax and use tax within the city of Harrison, Arkansas, for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, indoor equipping, water, sewer, street, drainage, composting, and public safety improvements within the city of Harrison, Arkansas, which sales and use tax shall be levied and collected until December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-six, prescribing other matters pertaining thereto.
I'll entertain a motion for adoption.
I'll make that motion, I apologize if you didn't hear that there.
Second.
I have a motion, second, any discussion? There being none, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same? Okay, thank you. We will get the paperwork rolling on that stuff in state. Uh, we'll get rolling on our education. All right, now we're gonna move down into old business next, unless somebody's got another ordinance, I'm not aware of.
If they do, they can write it.
They can write it themselves. All right. Uh, does everybody have a chance to read the lease agreement with the fourth of July? It's like an old one, you know, I've said, we had this lease way back in, before, what, sixty? Sixty-five, or, yeah, we've had a lease with them back in sixty-five. This one, you just need to authorize the, this office to sign the lease, uh, unless somebody's got a problem with it. They've been very well worked with, the way we haven't had a problem with them, kept the building up and everything else, so. Unless somebody's got an issue with it, I'll entertain a motion for the mayor to sign this.
I will give you a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion? There being none, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same? Okay. Hey, what happened? Anybody here with a college tonight?
I can provide a little bit of...
Oh, okay.
Um, I did receive an email, we're, we're scheduling some meetings with different parties that would be involved with this, but, uh, my understanding is that they have decided not to pursue it in this current grant cycle in order to build it more time, so this is something that will probably come up six, nine months out again, as they're getting ready to hit the next grant cycle. I think they, they kind of, we all started talking about this and working on it, and just a little bit too late in the game for the current grant cycle that we're looking at, so.
Don't worry about that time agree.
Well, I was thinking that too.
They'll, they'll pursue it, like Wade said, next cycle. All right, flip the page. Uh, we have Mr. Neighbor. I'd like, I'd like you, your name came up here.
Ask me if I'm nervous. Mr. Mayor and Council, I appreciate the opportunity to, to come before you tonight, and, uh, I want to thank those in the audience who have also come tonight, um, and I want to acknowledge the work of the city with respect to looking at our traffic issues, um, and making plans for that, and, uh, I appreciate all your work in that respect. And I want to apologize for coming, for being late coming, because I understand I was gonna do this, I should've come earlier, and I appreciate the opportunity to come late. So, last week, uh, the city sent a letter to the Arkansas Department of Transportation and making a request that the highway department of would, uh, begin the process of planning and developing and constructing a bypass around the city with the preference of the city being the, what's known as the north route, which will go around the east side of Harrison. And, uh, so that's why I'm here. Uh, I think we need to reevaluate that decision. I think the economic impact of that decision could actually, could virtually kill Harrison. Uh, I copied each of you on email, uh, I think yesterday or maybe the day before, outlining the reasons for my opposition, as well as alternate, possible alternatives. So I won't waste your time going through the details of that, but I would like to summarize it. First, let me say that I think we all realize that Harrison is in a very unique position in that if you're traveling from the south or from most of Texas, and you're headed to Branson, Missouri, or a lot of the Ozarks, you have to come through Harrison, Arkansas. So the impact of that is, is that we've had an amazing economic opportunity here to capitalize on that traffic that's coming through here. And I would say, though, that a significant part of our tax base comes from the sales to those people who are traveling the present bypass. So, here's what I think would be best for Harrison, this is my opinion. I think we need to keep the bypass where it is. I think we, uh, we need to preserve our businesses and our tax base and the jobs that are provided by those businesses. I think we need to upgrade the bypass so that the lanes are safe and efficient. I think we need to improve our major street crossings. I think we need to concentrate on keeping the, what I call through traffic, the people that are driving through Harrison. I think we need to concentrate on keeping that traffic, which I believe is the community's lifeblood, on the bypass, right where it is. I think we need to improve our city's street system so that we can move more local traffic, uh, away from the bypass, and know that the, the city's master street plan addresses that issue. In other words, instead of finding a way to move the through traffic away from Harrison, around Harrison and away from our businesses, I think we need to concentrate on keeping that traffic right where it is and moving our local, giving our local, uh, citizens the opportunity to use alternative routes. So, what I'm suggesting to you is that we step back and reevaluate our options. The highway is our lifeblood, without it, I think our town dies. I don't think we're at the mercy of the state. I think we have a lot more clout, a lot more influence with the state than we might think. So I'd like to challenge you, the council members, to get involved in this issue. So I think we ought to get the players together, the council, the city, the highway department, businesses along the bypass, get all those players together, and try to come up with a plan that would save our bypass, that would keep the, that would make the bypass safer, that would move traffic efficiently, and, uh, that would move local traffic efficiently across and around the bypass. This is our town, and I'd like for us to stand up and fight for our economic future. I think we can do it, and I think it's time to get started.
Believe it or not, the bypass, whether or not, it doesn't eat. The city will not really have anything to do with it. I don't know if you, I thought you were coming today to talk to me, I don't know if you looked at, actually, the option that they put to us. Our first option is, well, it's not really an option, but it's what the city has pursued for several years, especially since I've been here, is to redo our current bypass, just like you proposed. Well, and Wade stepped in here with me, but, okay, they came a couple of years ago with a option on a current sixty-five. It, uh, well, I don't know who grew that up, but it must've been somebody from New York City or somewhere, they had a flyover. Yeah, the first one, and then this came. I don't know if you've even seen this.
Not before the...
Yeah. Believe it or not, their businesses, it eats, uh, and that's just they want, what they're looking at is twenty-five years down the road, or thirty years down the road for the traffic. Whether, and I talked to him actually the other day, again, whatever they think warrants a timeframe to do something to Harrison, it could be years and years down the road. When they say it takes an hour to get through Harrison, they're probably gonna miss it. Or, but, right now, they're already saying it's detrimental to businesses. The traffic we have right now is even detrimental to businesses.
It's approaching, it's approaching levels where, where the delays are going to deter people from, uh, from shopping or going in that area. You know, a lot of what you said, I think most of us are gonna agree to. And prior to seeing that option, which is a six-lane divided highway, uh, through the middle of town, I think everybody would agree to everything you said a hundred percent, because that's actually exactly what we asked them to do. Give us an option, tell us what we can do to avoid bypassing and losing the traffic through town. That's what they came back with. And it does take out a significant number of businesses. Including, and then some, you know, they lose parking, they lose frontage, uh, they're, they're just right up to the highway. So, what we really need for them to do, and what we've been asking for them to do, is make improvements to highway through through intersection there with sixty-five, that's a huge problem. And so, they're trying to get a grasp on their long-range planning before they spend a few million dollars on that right now, so that if, if, if the six-lane divided highway is what's gonna come through town at some point in the future, if that's their plan, they want to make sure they get the right of way, they get things set up to where it'll be compatible with, with that, and they're not having to redo that entire intersection in a few years.
But my understanding is, is that the latter, in essence, took that option off the table.
We, I do not think that a six-lane divided highway through that area is...
Nor do I think we need a six-lane divided highway, I, you know, what it is. Maybe I'm being really naive, but I'm thinking that if we can get the players together with the state, we can come up with a five-lane that's, that meets the federal standards and that impacts a few of our businesses.
It is, it is a five-lane.
Right.
So, I mean, all we're talking about, and one of the things we've, we've complained about, particularly the section there from Main Street back towards Edward's Grocery, is the width. So that's, that's a safety issue, that's not necessarily a capacity issue. What they're looking at here is capacity, not, I mean, which leads to safety, but they're, they're literally looking at what they call a level service. And their computer modeling projects twenty, thirty years out, that at the majority of the time, if we don't have a six-lane divided highway, level service on that section of road will be inadequate.
If we had all the routes from local traffic, that might areas further into the future.
Yeah, which is what we're doing.
Yes.
And that's some of, actually, what I talked about tonight, alternate routing, is something in our new infrastructure, believe it or not. And that, I think that will prolong whenever they do anything. Believe it or not, we can get alternate routing within our city, I think it'll prolong a decision way down the road for them to actually do something.
They're not gonna spend thirty-five, forty million dollars on a bypass until... They're not gonna spend thirty-five, forty million dollars on a bypass until those traffic numbers continue to go up and it becomes necessary. But they're gonna plan ahead, because their projections are showing that that's what's gonna happen. Now, it's up to us, on our transportation system, to try and keep those numbers from increasing by getting alternate good routes.
So, I, so I think what, I think that one of the impacts of the letter, the request would be that, that further development of the businesses and property along the current bypass comes to a halt. If I were, if I were gonna build a large restaurant, for example, that's the industry I understand, or at least I think I understand, I would not look at that.
Look at it, because you think it's always gonna be dangerous.
It's gonna move. And my business is gonna be off, off the major travel. So, I feel like the impact of the letter would be to stop development now.
But, but the letter actually, while we don't object to the bypass routes, we, we tell them to focus now on improving that existing corridor, because we, we still believe that improving that corridor and improving our system will continue to delight. I mean, the reality of it is, is the concept of a bypass has been around since I was a kid, growing up here. When I was in college, I worked at the highway department. It was discussed, there was public information about it back then. So, you know, I, I don't, you know, I can't say for sure that it's gonna kill development, but, you know, this, this is just a conversation that we've had to have now. And we've reached that point in the planning process, particularly with RDOC, and what they're seeing in their projections, that we've had to have this conversation. And we've tried not to have this conversation entirely behind closed door, because we need input from people like you. The reality of it is, is all this wanna say, well, one's gonna be better than the other, one's gonna be good for us, ones and all. It doesn't matter what happens, we're gonna face a pretty significant challenge from an economic development standpoint, regardless of whether it's a bypass or that six-lane. And so, we, that's the whole, part of the whole part of the discussion now, is we gotta start planning for it as a city.
But I'd be glad to call in any representatives, well, I can't tell them to be here, but, you know, and have a discussion between business owners, you know, along the bypass, along that sixty-five corridor. That's, you know, we're not, this is just talk right now, nothing's gonna take, believe it or not. All these are renderings.
I understand these are renderings, but, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the, the effect of the letter says we're gonna go ahead and take the six-lane, go ahead and take the improvements to the existing bypass off the table and start planning for a bypass around Harrison.
The city, yeah, the city did not think this was a viable option, because, believe it or not, we're gonna lose more business if they put that in.
Oh, I understand.
Yeah, if they put that in, we're gonna lose more business. We just wanna, we just wanna prepare our city for the future. If they do do a bypass, we would like to say, well, this, this fits our city better, we see growth better there, it fits our infrastructure better. But they still may do that. We don't have a slant idea. They still may do this, but I don't think so.
I like to think they wouldn't do that, unless we agree with them. Well, I really, I feel like they're, they wanna do as much, as best they can, they wanna do what we, that's, that's, I feel like we need to visit and make sure they. But I, I guess one of my main, major points, Mr. Mayor, is that, is that, correct me if I'm wrong, but if I received that letter, that letter tells me Harrison doesn't wanna do anything with their existing bypass, except to, except to make it safer now.
We want that improvement in our existing bypass.
That's right, you said that. But, but you're saying in the letter that the option of, of making, of improving this current bypass and not building a bypass that goes around town, you took that off the table.
This option they're taking off the table. You're correct, that op, total option.
Yes, and it goes, it does go on to say, therefore, let the forty-three.
Interchange.
Intersection project. And then, yes, it does address a lot of the safety issues going on that southern corridor.
Mr. Mayor, there's so many issues to this, too. We're talking about the cost involved, and the point being that from that point to that point, it's about the same cost as the bypass north option for a two-lane, right?
Yeah. Yeah, you're looking at very similar costs to do one phase of what would be multi-phases along the existing sixty-five corridor, as opposed to getting a highway along the perimeter of town.
And how does that cost difference affect, I mean, that's a political question, too, on cost, whether or not you could marshal enough political influence to change that in Little Rock? Because I'm sure that unless the legislature or the highway department hear differently, they're always gonna fit a thirty million dollar job versus a hundred and fifty million dollar job. Correct?
Yeah, I mean, spending thirty million versus seventy million to, to sort of the same purpose of what, what they're looking to do, they're gonna.
And it's, not to bring this up, it reminds me a little bit of the road diet discussion and where the roads go. Obviously, our current bypass wouldn't be in the position it was in if we didn't have as many curb cuts and slowing traffic down to get more movement, and had some of this work been done years ago. And, you know, you and I have had that discussion, access roads and, and all of that, that poor planning, this is what you get. I would, I would prefer that direct route, but I'd hate to be the person that votes to get rid of all of those restaurants or businesses up through there, because we want a six-lane, you know, divided highway through the middle of the community.
I prefer to have a road like that with, with access roads on either side.
Absolutely.
That would be the ideal situation.
But it's, but here, it's gonna look a lot different with a six-lane road through town and access roads.
It's a significant run compared to what it is right now.
No kidding. Would it be safe to say the community would look completely different?
Yes.
Well, I'd just like to reiterate the economic impact.
Oh, I?
The economic impact is gonna be disastrous. And so, if you're looking at sixty or seventy million versus thirty million, a long-term impact on Harrison, that's a drop in the bucket.
Well, you're, you're correct there, over fifty years of business, and I would hate, you know, you see communities where a bypass around them really negatively affects them. In some, it doesn't have that much effect, because the local traffic was just, there wasn't much local traffic there. And Harrison, you stated it, we're in a unique position, just not because of sixty-five, but US Highway 412 and US Highway 62. Harrison's in a very unique position, having three major US highways coming through the community. And we do need to take advantage of it, for sure.
Our, our total push, believe you mean, just what you said, is for them to work on our sixty-five. That, that's our total push, and it's been, believe it or not, for several years, that's been pushed. When they keep coming back, here's what things need to happen 25 years down the road, here's what, here's, here's the options. But I'd be more than glad to.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I don't have the, the letter that the city sent. Do you have that, Wade? I thought I had it.
I can get it, I got it in the office in Franklin.
But I'm, I'm pretty sure that if I were, if I received that letter, if I'm a highway department engineer, if I received that letter, I would say, okay, they wanna build a bypass around Harrison. I'm pretty sure that's, that's the way they would interpret it. And so, all I'm asking is, could we step back and say, whoa, you know, if that's what you thought we were saying, that's not what we're saying?
Yes, I do. We're gonna keep pushing, we're gonna keep pushing for them to work and make our sixty-five corridor safer. That's the number one thing we want to do. But there is an issue, and they told us right up front, if they go with this option, that forty-three interchange may, it may be, there's the big question.
That's the whole point of the discussion. If their long-term plan is to put a six-lane through town, they wanna build that forty-three intersection in a way that fits into that, because you'd have to do it different now.
And I would say that I believe that we have enough clout and we have enough influence that we could scale down the six-lane to five-lane with, with good cross streets. Maybe I'm wrong, but I sure think we ought to make an attempt to do that.
Those plans are actually underwriting, and, and, I guess, I'm just trying to figure out how to, how to put this. They wouldn't move forward with the forty-three until we told them we didn't want a six-lane. Is that, I mean, is that?
Pretty well, what they say.
We want forty-three under disruption. We, I mean, this was four years ago, whenever we entered partnership with them. As long as we continue to have the discussion, you know, we just continue to keep putting off that project. So, what the work that's programmed right now is to improve that existing five-lane section. And we're also agreeing with them to make improvements to the other five-lane section. But they, they, they needed something to where they could move forward with the project, because they just, you know, our original reaction to bypass study, to the information they were giving us was, we don't want bypass. And that was our position, that was in the mayor's office, implored for improvements on the exist, existing corridor. Even Guard, you got some of our state representatives.
Well, I got federal and state.
To, to all areas of support. And so, we met with them, and we kept talking about it, and this six-lane is what they've said is what, that's what it will take to carry projected traffic in the future. Now, we can want that to be a five-lane, all we want, and we might be able to get it to stay a five-lane. Part of that's gonna be on us to make those improvements and to invest ourselves into transportation. But.
Some of our improvements going forward that the city's putting out, and I'll reiterate on this, are the, what they pushed alternate routing on us right off the bat. They said, well, you know, you want to do all this if you have alternate routing. We're trying to work that alternate routing. That alternate routing, though, believe it or not, costs millions and millions of dollars. The last thing we want to do is lose businesses. And we told them that right up front, we cannot lose businesses or business. That's the number one thing we're facing here in the whole situation. Did you find it there? Did you find it? I got it. Yeah, but the options that they presented us with is this or the bypass, the renderings of these bypasses, we look at what we thought would be the best for our city years and years down the road, if we were not.
Yes, yes, in ten years, we're taking another look at this with the highway department, and we've done our job to get traffic moving around, and they don't see the need to continue that, to continue to have a bypass that plays the plan, it goes on the shelf. I mean, this Frenell bypass is apparently about to get put back on the shelf, and that's one they've been talking about for twenty-plus years.
But I'd be glad to entertain anything that's publicly, believe it or not. I would be glad to entertain that, and if I had to take it all the way up to the top, I, I would do that, too. But if you wanted to provide, if you wanted to surprise some people or some businesses that wanna get together and sit down and, and talk the options, and we'll, we'll push you to the highway department. I don't have a problem with it.
All right. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Can I make a quick statement?
Your time's up. Get up here, close.
Well, what I've been complaining about for forty years is we didn't have a master street plan. And I talked to everybody before Frank Delannas and Wade and I've gone through it, and one of the issues is the amount of traffic on sixty-five, basically from the industrial park road up through forty-three. And our master street plan was to get the traffic off of that section, so that the highway department would be less likely to cause kind of problems we're looking at with these two alternatives. And if we don't have the cooperation of the citizens of Harrison, and it's gonna hurt some people's feelings, it's gonna probably get into some people's pockets if we, if we can, if we make this master street plan work, so we get the traffic off there. I don't know how much traffic, local traffic, we would have to get off of there, that section, to alleviate the highway department trying to run it down our throats, but we, and as you mentioned a minute ago, the master street plan's gonna cost the city a lot of money, because nobody's gonna pay for those new streets, street YDs and stuff like that, except the city. That's gonna fall back on the infrastructure, the infrastructure tax also. So, it's not gonna be an easy job for anybody in the city, whether on the council, or Wade, or you, to get this done. But if we could have some kind of instructions or, or some kind of percentage of traffic we have to get off of there to help us understand whether we'll be able to avoid this issue we're having, that would kinda be nice. I know that Wade's, they're highly involved in this and working hard on it, and I know you have, too, but it's gonna take everybody in the city to keep this from happening and really devastate the city. If we don't get involved in it, it's gonna devastate the city in the long run.
Our master street plan, Wade came up with it in the planning group, of course, you're on the planning team, you saw that in several big, I was with that, too. How was that total overall estimate on that master, right at a hundred? Oh, you told me a hundred out there?
No, that was, that was, that was the priority project, that wasn't the pool. You know, it was probably about forty percent of the plan.
What was that, what was the number behind that?
Well, I think it's got an M attached to it.
Exactly. And, and some of those, some of that that is in the master street plan will not ever be necessary unless there is a bypass.
Yes, that's true, too.
We're trying to plan to delay, but also adapt if it does come to fruition, because, because if it's gonna happen and we don't prepare for it, it's, it's an absolute certainty if it does happen.
Yep, yep. But we're trying to address all those issues, believe it or not, we.
But the, we need to.
Meetings on this.
But like Mike said, we need to get everybody involved in this. Everybody needs to understand the ramifications of whether it takes place on what's going on inside the council, what's going on with Wade, what's going on with the taxes and stuff like that. Everybody needs to understand that that infrastructure tax is gonna be desperately needed, no matter what happens.
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have to say.
Everybody else like Chris? Now, Mike, can you get with me?
Yes, sir.
I'll get with you.
All right.
We'll get it rolling, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. We're still on second page, Jim? Okay, we're gonna move down to what we talked about the other day in, in committee meetings for help for Luke's. We have a young lady that's with the college, and we'd like to keep her on with cooperation with the college, but we will have to pay money up front, and that'd be about $2,045 up front, or we'll see that money back. But, but still, we'll have to have approval from the council to do that, so I'll entertain a motion that we.
Make that motion in there?
Second. Motion, second, through, ten to pay for Mr. Frager, in discussion. I've been known on the way by I.
I.
On post saying. Okay, Mr. Frager's still not here tonight, but you heard discussion on providing to the wellness committee up to $2,000 for maintenance and, and/or anything else. Well, I don't wanna say anything else, but cleaning supplies and different, that's up, too. Hopefully, they won't spend that much. Hopefully, they won't spend that much money, but... Yep, you want to mention anything about what's going to be the money maybe go over?
No, it's just to make, to help maintain the, sometimes when we do the employee wellness laws, things like that, we will need to buy some water or a healthy snack or something for the meetings, that kind of thing. Currently, you don't have any, any line item that it comes from. We've been doing really good about getting a lot of it donated, or all of it donated. But in the event we need to, the city needs to buy something, need to be an account available.
And if, if we're going to push this with employees and they're going, they're going to benefit and be interested in it, then we need to show our support.
And you know, there is some incentives that they're probably going to bring, I think, next for the committee meetings. Some incentives they want to bring up in the, actually, there's some of this $2,000.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve the $2,000 for wellness account?
Second. Motion to approve it. And the second is further discussion. There being none on the way by eye?
Aye.
On both sides? Okay, we're going to move down into those infrastructure funds we've been talking about all night long. But anyway, we do have some, some additional money. We say some places in our infrastructure things we didn't need. But we're going to have several hundred thousand dollars worth of paving going on. And while we have our contractors here to do that paving, we really need to approve another additional $135,000 in our overlays on Cottonwood Road and Old Drive. The total of those two, one, the extension, one, I think, on Cottonwood's extension, we weren't going to pay it all or forward, which one was it?
Cottonwood will, Cottonwood will...
I got it.
Cottonwood will be from...
Bypass to forty-three.
Sixty-five to forty-three.
Seventy thousand.
Yeah, we've, we've been doing permanent work there and, and there's actually some of where they're going to do some more cuts. So, once all that's done, it'll be a good time to get that new surface down before we start losing some of the integrity of the existing asphalt. And then forward will be the, the asphalt portion from Industrial Park Road to Rockland. Now, the remainder of that road's concrete. And we, we've done maintenance on that over the last few years, but it's, it's not really in the new service right now.
These two items are in addition, they're addition items. So, and we have funds for them, so...
I'll make a motion that we approve the reallocation for the infrastructure funds.
Second.
Motion, the second, in further discussion. There being none on the way by eye?
Aye.
On both sides? Also, within the infrastructure, we, we had a power broom purchase in there. And believe it or not, we found that we've got a power broom that's done what we need to do.
It's, it's old, but it's in pretty good condition. And it's not an item that we use on a terribly regular basis. So, probably not worth investing in a brand-new one right now, or any time in the near future.
We had $35,000 in there for that. And the street department is in need of a new tractor. It's a golden ride-away tractor, it's a smaller tractor. Estimated cost on that's twenty-five, twenty-eight thousand. And they'd like to, in lieu of the power broom, they'd like to purchase the tractor.
Before I make a motion, I'd like to say that my parents have a tractor that's started in 1994.
Now, Hackack there, you might have lucked.
Make a motion to reallocate the purchase, to purchase the tractor in lieu of a power broom.
Second. Motion, second, in further discussion.
Is that a new tractor?
Yes.
And do we...
Sorry.
That's why I asked the question, we want that used. I want somebody else to provide. The power broom that we currently have, you said it wouldn't use very much, wouldn't it?
Wouldn't it? Well, one time we used it a lot, exactly, just while you were out there having to clean off streets.
We don't have regular routes at the power broom, like every Tuesday?
Yeah, the power broom is not, is not the same as our streets.
Okay, okay.
It's basically for when you've got mud or something caked down on concrete or asphalt, it's what you're going to get it up on with.
I understand that.
Motion, second on the table, need further discussion. There being none on the way by eye?
Aye.
On both sides? We got another hour here? Well, there's a little... Okay, talk a little bit about spring cleanup. Promoted some. I want everybody to get everything they need out of their house or out, off their front porch and out of their yard, get the yard cleaned up. As up there on what Inland's going to do in the wards, April thirty to May fourth is Ward one. Ward two, May seventh to eleventh. Ward three is May fourteenth to the eighteenth. Ward four is May twenty-first to twenty-fifth. If you have, if you have anything that you're in doubt about, you can call the mayor's office or Public Works. But we need to get our cities cleaned up here before we actually start going all the grass. And there is the base. But if you're not sure about which ward you're in, you can call City Hall. And we'll be glad to tell you. Okay, we're also having this Saturday here at City Hall, ten AM to two PM. And everybody knows about opioids. If you don't, you need to, well, maybe open your eyes or whatever. But the city is having a take-back day. Actually, it's a nationwide type thing. The city will be open from ten to two, or City Hall will be open for drug take-back right in the front door down there. Our, one of our detectives will be doing that. So, please, get all the drugs that you're not using out of your house, please.
Opioids is obviously a big reason for this, but it's any prescription medication or expired medications because we would much prefer you dispose of them that way than flush them down the toilet because that's actually becoming a major issue in wastewater treatment across the country is, is the amount of pharmaceuticals that were hidden in wastewater stream. That wastewater treatments just aren't designed or capable to remove. Another, another important reason for...
Well, like I say, you know, if you've got any kind of prescription drug or any kind of drug period, aspirin or whatever, city will take them back. Believe it or not, there's no charge. There's no charge. So, we will dispose of them properly. Actually, we take those over, I think, to Springdale or something.
Where's Springdale?
Springdale. But be aware of that. That's this Saturday from ten AM to two PM. Okay. I will open it up to the council at this time. Does anybody on the council would like to say anything? Okay, I think we have Mrs. Whitmer. You want to talk to her?
Sure.
Get up here, young lady, get up here.
I've never done this.
That's all right.
I don't do politics and, but thank you for all, all of you for serving. I prepared a statement, so just if I can read it real quick. And my topic is the bypass. So, some of you, some of your family's been in our home, coupled the Alderman, your daughter and granddaughter for different things, just from their home before. So, dear Mayor Sherrill, Harrison Alderman, Public Works Director Phillips, City Council official, citizens of Harrison, and to commit a concern with R.D. Thank you for your service to our community and area. I'm here tonight to represent my neighborhood, one of several families on Redwood Drive, West Branch and Wolf Springs Road, where the prospective northeast bypass has been proposed to be laid. We know nothing is final, but just as decisions are made, we just wanted to raise our hand and let the city, county, and state know that there are families, homes, memories, and livelihoods that lay underneath that proposed swath of highway there. Of course, we would value other options being researched and explored, both for our land and homes as well as for the future economy of our area. We love our piece of the Ozarks. Thank you for your time to hear our voice in this process. Sincerely, Lisa Whitmer and my family.
We appreciate your comment.
Well, thank you. This is my first time to ever do it.
You did it outstaged? Hold on now, hold on. Hold on, I'm not going to let you go.
Oh, no.
Somebody might need a question, do you?
Okay, sure.
Anybody got a question for us?
And we are, our neighborhood there is meeting with the highway department at our home in a couple of weeks just to kind of get a lay of the land, no pun intended, but, you know, just to kind of see...
Really, you're ahead of us.
Ask questions. I started asking questions. You know, when I started seeing, we haven't gotten the newspaper in a while. We started in this year and it keeps popping up. So, we just wanted to ask questions. We love where we are, we love our community. My, my mom grew up here, my children are fifth-generation Harrison. And so, I'm a Jersey girl, but I still love my, my Ozarks here now. So, they're, they're in our family quite a bit.
You keep me informed what they have to say, we believe.
I would think you all would have a deeper relationship with them than I would.
You just told us you're having them out there, so they're going, they're going to say something, too.
I don't know if they can say much. Steve Lawrence said he would be helpful as much as he can.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for letting me share.
Okay, is anybody else in there? Yes, ma'am?
Stacy Pinkel. First thing I want to say is thank you for the prayer. As a member of First Presbyterian Church, I want you to know that we pray for you every Sunday morning. This is the first time I've ever done this. I'm kind of confused as to where the dog stuff is.
It's not. You're not confused, we're all confused about it. So, you're getting right in there.
Well, this is my, this is my dog inflammation. Started in 2014 and it goes up to Tuesday evening when I was, my husband and this term to our property along with my dog was attacked by the same dog that has attacked us. This was the fifth time. I don't know what to say to y'all. We have a...
Where, where is it, ma'am?
Fifteen, ten Westport, right down from your mom and mom.
Yep.
Yeah, five times, started in 2014. The last two times the dog has come onto our property, and I must say, we have the greatest policeman that there is. But I don't know what to do now. I have no idea. A hundred-dollar fine means absolutely nothing to this man when he's got a ninety-eight-pound boxer who is jumping on a hundred-and-twenty-pound woman, or my husband this last time, who is seventy-five years old. At this point, the only thing I can hope for is that the dog hurts somebody. Me, my husband, because then I can go to the insurance company and I can say, okay, I have to go to the hospital. I would love to be able to afford a psychiatrist that can help me deal with the fact that every time I walk out of my house, I have to have pepper spray. And that should not be. That should not be. And I can tell you, a hundred-dollar fine means absolutely nothing to this man. It means nothing. But I had a six-foot and an over-six-foot man Tuesday night trying to keep this dog away from them and away from my dog.
This just happened?
Tuesday night, yeah. This includes all my letters to the mayor, mayor. This includes all the police reports.
Those are like a year old.
Oh, yeah, he's back.
He's back.
He's back. And the only thing he says, uh, sorry about that.
I said that?
No, that's what the guy said. That's all it says. I'm sorry. The first time, he had to attack us three times before he got the hundred-dollar fine. And now, I don't know. I, I don't know, I'm at Jersey, I have no idea what to do. Shoot him, shoot the dog? You know what I said when I said...
When the dog gets involved, if you shoot him.
That's the problem. That's the problem. But the other problem is, and you think pepper spray might help, but when, when I'm attacked and I grab my dog and try to protect my dog's backside, I have no way to pepper spray. I have no way to pepper spray. All I do is turn circles and scream. So, I guess the thing I hope for is that I get a breath and heal, or somebody gets hurt, or we just got a brand-new executive from somewhere on the street that has a baby and a toddler. And I'm telling y'all, that dog is going to hurt somebody one day. It's going to hurt him. It's only hurt me mentally. It makes me afraid to go out of my house. And, and I deserve more than that. I should not have to walk the streets of Harrison with pepper spray. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Can you come back? Right there?
If you don't mind. Ma'am, I can tell you, from a council member, the, the number of comments and contacts that I've had on both sides, and it's difficult. I agree in your case, I think we should pass an ordinance immediately for vicious dogs. And I don't understand, I've been on this council now three years, and we've discussed it over and over since. As far as vicious dogs versus barking dogs or dogs on the loose, that I don't understand. If you have an incident with a dog that attacked somebody, I think that should be, there should be some remedy immediately for that. And I don't know if council was, you know, when we had these discussions, what happened tonight was there was enough comment probably from the, the different members of the community that what we have doesn't fit. So, neither party would be happy. Okay? So, I get calls, for example, today, I received one literally thirty minutes before I got here saying, I got fined a hundred dollars because my neighbor complained. It's my child's dog. I paid the, had to pay the hundred dollars, forgot it, ended up in court and the fine for being late was four hundred. And he said, my neighbor just said, ha, I got you. I told you I was going to get you on one complaint. Whether that occurred or not, I don't know. And I know the man that called me and I trust him. But saying that, we have just as many people saying we need to do something about this problem. Your problem is different. And I think council should have some sort of vicious dog ordinance or some sort of ground law or anything, immediately. But a lot of people want to wait to put that all in one ordinance, and I understand that. So, when you get calls on both sides, it's difficult, and that's what occurred tonight. I think the council had received enough calls that we're confused about what we've done in place and what we want to put in. It's not that council's not ready to do something, it's just that we went one direction and we, we didn't finish it out. Would that be a fair statement, Mr. Mayor?
Definitely, definitely. But, you know, we can somewhat address vicious dog coming up though without our current ordinance.
There's a state statute that we can do if they fight a person.
Yes.
But that's all, I can't do anything if your dog's that large. We're just wasting our time responding because we don't have no influence to enforce anything. We can't do anything if your dog's barking all day long because there's no ordinance. So, really, we're just wasting taxpayers' money by even showing up because we can't enforce anything. So, really, we're just spending money, wasting our officers' time when there's other calls that we need handling.
Again, unfortunately, Mr. Hack, it's, or some of this, again, to try and develop some sort of ordinance that we can give you that's enforceable, that dog owners and people that don't have dogs can accept.
Yeah, we need to, we need to look at more specific...
Specificity?
Yes, thank you. As it pertains to the barking part of it.
Maybe we could take the barking part out and mask the other and work on just that.
Or get more, that's our number one complaint, isn't it?
Yes.
Are there more complaining town, is dogs at large that ends up chasing people? Or other dogs and barking? We spend more time handling those calls, and right now, we have, we have nothing to do. We're wasting our time asking them to put their dogs away. We admit and say, no, you don't have an ordinance, you can't make us.
Yeah, I heard that story.
So...
We can't make them do anything.
Only we really do is go back and tell the person that called, that we can't do anything. And then we become the bad guy because we can't solve the problem. and then we become a bad guy, because we can't solve the problem.
But we need to be careful when we do get more specific with that portion, that we don't give people loopholes. Also, on the flip side of that, say we say thirty minutes and their dog only barks twenty-five minutes, you know, it's, it's kept, it's disturbed you, woke you out of your sleep, disturbed whatever you were doing, at any rate, so I mean, we got to just look at.
Well, we'll definitely bring it on, it'll definitely be on the committee.
Yes, yes.
We'll definitely bring, I want to get something done. You know, I, I really wanted this to go through, but you decided not to, because like I always said, we can always tweak. We can all, right now, though, we're at a standstill with these barks.
I would challenge the council of let's do it and get it done. I know that puts a pressure on you and the mayor and the committee.
You're definitely right. But sometimes you can get a little too specific. Have you watched that too?
That was, that's part of this problem, that discussion, that I had people calling me saying, well, being, you know, what you're proposing is too specific if you go any further than what you have, and then some said, you need to be more specific. We haven't come up with that happy medium through any of this. And if you don't make anybody happy, it's the wrong ordinance.
That's true.
Could we address the vicious dog issue?
Well, we can, we can take this.
And the dog at large.
But we can, we can address unless something happens, right now, on that one. You know, if they did, if it did bite you, yes, oh, definitely, we can address. We don't want that to happen though.
I, I know, but there's no.
The dog at large, we can't do anything right now. Our hands are totally tied right now. I'm just telling you.
That is, you know, that's beyond me, that I, I can't walk my neighborhood because I got a ninety-eight pound dog that's going to jump on me. And it is safe also.
Well, we'll def, I'll definitely want this council to come up with a remedy, and I have to do it myself, but, you know, we'll do it, but we need a remedy, and it needs to be soon. Okay, well, that's going to be a pretty long discussion, so bring your iced tea or Coke or, or Kool-Aid, or whatever you bring in the committee. So anybody else, you know, I'd like to say?